All right, good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, February 14th, and I'm going to call to order the regular city council meeting for the city of Richfield. If you are able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have the open forum. If you are watching online, you can call in by dialing 1-415-655-0001. Use the webinar access code 2540-712-7948, and the password is 1234. Has anyone called in for that? Is there anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak at the open forum? All right, we'll wait. I think there's a little bit of a tape delay, so we'll wait and see if someone calls in. Okay, it does not appear that anyone is calling in or waiting to speak. Do you have anyone there, management analyst Swanson?
Mayor and council, there is nobody on the line waiting to speak.
All right, then we will move forward. Next, we have our next agenda item is approval of the minutes of the city council regular meeting of January 24th, 2023, and the joint city council and transportation commission work session of February 1st, 2023.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, we've approved the minutes. Next, we have a proclamation celebrating Black History Month that was forwarded to us by the Human Rights Commission, and Carol Kelly is going to join me over here for the presentation of the proclamation. So, we're going to read through this, and then if you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome to. So, this is a proclamation of the city of Richfield, where as Black History Month is for celebrating the achievements of African-Americans who shaped the history of our city, state, and nation, and to pay tribute to their struggles for freedom and equality. And whereas, the origin of Black History Month goes back to 1925. In that year, the Harvard-trained historian Carter G. Woodson created Negro History Week to increase awareness of African-Americans' contributions to the United States. The week included the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln, February 12th, and Frederick Douglass, February 14th. And whereas, Rosa Parks Day is celebrated on February 4th in honor of Rosa Parks, who in 1955 challenged an Alabama bus driver's demand for her to give up her bus seat to a white man and move to the back of the bus. Her refusal and subsequent arrest sparked the Montgomery Bus Boycott. This became the first mass protest against racial segregation in the United States. And, whereas, in 1976, the United States' bicentennial year, President Gerald Ford expanded Negro History Week to a month by proclaiming February as Black History Month, urging Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. And, whereas, African-American families have lived in the city of Richfield since the early 1800s and have contributed to the community. For example, African-American achievements in the Richfield schools have been recognized since the late 19th century. At that time, William E. Patrick was an African-American teacher at East School in Richfield, and in 1967, John L. Peterson was captain of the Richfield High Track Team and is in the Richfield High School Athletic Hall of Fame. And whereas, in 1967, Richfield churches set an example for us all by banding together and declaring in a full-page newspaper ads, "We wish to make it known that Richfield churches welcome citizens of all races, colors, and creeds." And whereas, African-Americans have been involved in Richfield city government since at least the 1960s, when Robert Worthington was hired as the Richfield Planning Director in 1969. And whereas, Black or African-American residents represent 11.8% of the Richfield population in 2022. And whereas, the city of Richfield, its city council and staff identifies celebrating diversity and being equitable as core values, recognizing that our diverse culture is one of our greatest strengths and assets, striving to promote an environment of equity and inclusion. And whereas, the Richfield Human Rights Commission supported this proclamation at its February 2nd, 2023 meeting, and recommended this Richfield City Council do the same. And now, therefore, I, Mary Supple, Mayor of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as Black History Month in the city of Richfield, and call on the people of Richfield to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies, and continue to honor the contributions of Black Americans throughout the year. Proclaim this 14th day of February 2023. And so, thank you for coming to accept this proclamation, and thank you to the Human Rights Commission. Would you like to say something, Ms. Kelly?
Yes, thank the Mayor Supple very, very much. I'm really proud to receive this proclamation, not just as a resident of Richfield, but one of the people of color within our community. It's really important work that has been acknowledged, and in making this proclamation, I myself learned about the achievements of Black Americans here in the city of Richfield throughout the decades, and want to encourage anyone in our city to reach out, because Black History Month isn't just about the Rosa Parks of the world, they're about the Coach Flukuses at Richfield High School and the Officer Woods of our police department. So, it's your next-door neighbor, it's the people in our community that help make us feel welcome and acknowledge us as equals, as people of color, which hasn't been that long of a history. So, this is just really near and dear to my heart, and I thank you all for this proclamation.
Did any of the other council members wish to say anything? Councilmember Whalen?
I just wanted to say thank you, Carol, and other members of the Human Rights Commission. And also, just lift up, I often, when we do proclamations like this, make a point of pointing out the ways that we are living it out. We're not just celebrating and talking about it, but just want to share, we have made equity part of our strategic plan, and I believe, was just skimming an email, I believe by March, we'll have a public-facing dashboard of how we're advancing on our goals, on all the aspects of it, including equity. And just to acknowledge that absolutely celebrating the good parts of Black history is super essential and feels hollow if we're not also addressing the numerous negative and discriminatory parts of our history as a multiracial society, and so I'm proud that we are doing both of those things.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'll just say very briefly, thank you to Carol, and thanks for the Human Rights Commission for putting this together. It is good reminders, and I think there's been something similar year to year, but it's a good refresher on the importance of Black Richfielders.
Thank you.
I'd echo that, and it's great to see you, Carol Kelly, and I just want to thank you for your leadership in our community and volunteering on the Human Rights Commission also. And I know that our mayor says this often, too, that we celebrate Black History Month and Latino History Month. It's not, this is not the four weeks of the year that we talk about the contributions of Black folks or people of color, but it's an opportunity for us to lift up and reflect history that's integral to our community but is not lifted up like it could be. And so, to the extent we continue to learn new things when we have proclamations like that, it justifies the need for proclamations like that. So, thanks to the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you again, Carol, and thank you to the Human Rights Commission. All right, next, we have a proclamation for a resident of Richfield who just turned 100 years old. And I was told by her son that he did some research, and only one in 5,000 people make it to 100 years old, so we're going to be celebrating her as well. Whereas, a young immigrant couple from Norway welcomed Solvee Anne Ness into their family on February 11th, 1923. She joined seven brothers and one sister in a tiny little farmhouse in rural Edmore, North Dakota. And whereas, Solvee learned the importance of hard work, education, faith, and community while helping her mother-in-the-house attend school in a one-room schoolhouse and graduating from North Dakota State University. And whereas, Solvee met the love of her life, Ken Tweeden, in his father's grocery store while shopping for supplies for her student's home economics class, married him in 1945, and together they had five children. And whereas, in 1955, with five kids, the couple needed a larger home, they moved from Grand Forks, North Dakota, into a thriving new housing development in Richfield, north of the hub at 63rd and Grand. And whereas, Solvee turned her education and love of nutrition into a successful career as a consulting dietitian, becoming a registered dietitian at age 47, working in medical and nursing home settings. And whereas, Solvee retired at age 78, giving her more time to improve her golf, bridge, and ping-pong games, entertain her many friends and family, and enjoy winters in Arizona. And whereas, Solvee has continued to live a wonderful and active life well into her 90s, including weekly bridge games, making Lufsa each winter holiday, and sending birthday and Christmas gifts to her eight grandchildren and 21 great-grandchildren. And whereas, Solvee is celebrating 100 years of life, and the Richfield community celebrates Solvee for an exemplary life well-lived, now, therefore, I, Mary Supple, Mayor of Richfield, do hereby proclaim February 11th, 2023, as Solvee Tweeden Day in the city of Richfield. And we delivered this proclamation at her 100th birthday party on Saturday, February 11th, so the family received it then, so they're not here in attendance. So, congratulations and happy birthday. And I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything? All right, go ahead.
I was just going to say, because of the Norwegian connection, gratulare med dagen solvay, which is happy birthday in Norwegian. Also, I love that she makes Lufsa, because my family also does an annual Lufsa tradition.
Thank you. All right, then we will move on to approval of the agenda.
I would move the approval of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've approved the agenda. Next, we'll move on to the consent calendar and city manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider a three-part request, site plan review, two sign variances, and a one-stall parking variance for MSP commercials headquarters at 6436 Penn Avenue South. Item B, consider adoption of a resolution modifying the healthcare savings plan for police sergeants, theme space number 320 bargaining unit employee. Item C, consider adoption of a resolution granting extension of land use approvals for a planned unit development at 101 66th Street East. Item D, consider the approval of a bid tabulation and award a contract to Davy Resource Group for the Sheridan Pond Maintenance Project Phase II in the amount of $94,128.99, and authorize the city manager to approve contract changes up to $25,000 without further city council consideration. Item E, consider approval of the bid tabulation award, I'm sorry, of the bid tabulation and award, a contract to what? I'm just going to ask about the pronunciation. Whoa, Construction and Services, Inc., for the water treatment plant roof replacement project in the amount of $1,389,615, and authorize the city manager to approve contract changes up to $175,000 without further city council consideration. Item F, consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing the mayor and city council execute a master utility agreement, number 1051052, between the city of Richfield and the state of Minnesota Department of Transportation and MINDOT Selected Design Building Contractor, which will govern the replacement, repair, and/or relocation of city-owned utilities as part of the 494 Project One. And finally, item G, consider authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute a cost-share reimbursement agreement with Partnership Academy for installation of a water utility service line in advance of the city's 65th Street Reconstruction Project due to expansion of the Partnership Academy campus. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or clarifications? All right, councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Just a couple of comments on item A, the 6436 Penn. I don't have any issues with the staff recommendation, but I was just curious, what's the pattern for when these come, land use approvals come on consent versus its own item?
It was unanimously approved by the planning commission, and there were just no issues with staff.
Okay.
I don't think we have a formal
Okay.
process. Sometimes, when we put the agenda together, I will note it for the mayor if I think this could go on one or the, you know, one or the other.
Okay, so it's just kind of an individual judgment call? Okay. And yeah, like I said, I don't have any concerns. I did just want to mention, as we look forward to other policy considerations, this is a building that we had a different proposal for and a variance that we denied. And I did want to note, as we think in the future about our parking rules, this is a great use, I think I'm impressed with what they're doing with this building, but it's basically the only use that could possibly be allowed because of our parking use, which is a pretty limited-use office space. And I also wanted to note that because of our parking rules, although staff is showing some flexibility, they have 14 employees, and we're giving them a variance because we require 50% more stalls than they have employees, and it's not a customer-facing building. So, they did a great job with the rules that we have, and I appreciate staff going above and beyond to sort out some other things, like the sidewalk and the signage, but I think it's a great example of where we've, anything that might be a more engaging use that more community members would take advantage of is not allowed because of the parking rules. And even as applied to this use, we're requiring half again as many parking spots as people will ever be in the building. So, that's unfortunate, but given the existing climate, I think they did a really good job with this, and I'm glad with the recommendation.
All right, any other clarification questions? Otherwise, a motion is in order.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, the consent calendar has been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And we've passed the consent calendar. Next, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have had two requests for travel for conference, sorry, travel for councilmembers to national conferences, and Councilmember Troutman is interested in attending the National League of Cities Conference, which is coming up in March, and then Councilmember Whalen had expressed a possible interest in the conference in the fall. We usually only budget for one councilmember to go to a conference this year. We have in the budget $2,000 for a national conference and then $2,000 for local conferences. I do want to note, for this year, about half of the local conference money has been allocated. But also, in previous years, even though we've budgeted for one councilmember to attend a national conference, in the last four years, we have not had anybody go to a national conference. So, if you did send two councilmembers this year, you would be over budget for this year, but you've been under budget for four, four, and I just want to open it up for the discussion among councilmembers.
All right, did anyone wish to comment or give feedback on the proposals? Councilmember Whalen?
I can just share the one I'm considering. I don't know if it's in the cards, given being a new parent, but is the Local Progress National Convening, it's a group of local elected folks from around the country looking at particular, like, innovative solutions to various community problems, and so they do take overt stances on some things, and so that's part of why I wanted to ask. I don't know as much about the National League of Cities, if they also have specific stances that they're, I guess not lobbying for in the case of Local Progress, but are trying to equip people who want to work on progressive policy change. And so, just wanted to, again, first of all, don't know for sure yet if I am able to go, and secondly, check in if folks are comfortable with that or would want to look at the actual details of it before using city funds for it.
All right, further feedback, comments?
Yeah, with regards to the National League of Cities, they do take various policy positions, but it's city leaders from across the country, from a variety of political points of view, and so it's certainly, I think, less partisan, and I'm not presuming that the other event is, and I know it's, I found it really helpful when I had the opportunity, when I was first a councilmember, to attend and just engage with other folks that do this work from around the country and explore different ideas about how both you communicate as a councilmember and, you know, different programs and projects. And so, I didn't have a particular agenda, but more just saw it as an opportunity that I hadn't taken advantage of, and I just realized we had not sent anybody, of course, because of the pandemic, over the last several years. So, it, and I don't know that Ben has ever had the opportunity, so if there was a question about the budget, I'd be very happy to withdraw my proposal to go to the National League of Cities, because I did find, whatever the idea, I think it's a great opportunity every so often to just cross-pollinate your ideas with other folks that are doing work, so I appreciate that we have the opportunity to do that every so often.
All right, councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I don't have an issue with either one. I guess the question of, like, if it's too partisan or taking too much of a position, I think it probably needs to be up to the councilmember proposing it to sort of weigh if they think it's appropriate, unless there's like a huge red flag or concern from city staff. If we can go over this year, I think maybe we just should, and I just wanted to share my feedback to Katie when we talked about it one-on-one, was just that, like, an understanding that, like, there's one expensive, one expensive conference per councilmember per term would make sense to me, and otherwise, if money was available and unallocated, it might be available, but if that were the standard, I think both of these would qualify, because neither has done that in this term. So, I support that, and that was just my kind of suggested rule of thumb going forward, because I, you know, I did go to a local conference last year, and it was very unclear, and it seems like it's still unclear, like, when is it appropriate to ask for that funding, and what's our sort of understanding? So, I will say, my current understanding, for my own purposes, is one per councilmember per
I think we lost the last, you lost the last comment.
Or if there's extra money available, but I think this makes sense, and I support both these requests.
So, I do think it's important for people to attend conferences in professional development. I think it's clear-cut with the National League of Cities, because we're a member of the National League of Cities, just like the League of Minnesota Cities here in the state. I think it would be helpful if we had protocols for how we decided on other conferences in the future. I don't have an objection to you attending this, but I do think to make it cleaner down the road, we should figure out some kind of criteria or protocol that we could follow so that we would know, you know, so it wouldn't be just based on who happened to ask or what kind of mood we're in. We need to have clear-cut reasons and protocol would be helpful in the future. Okay, go ahead, councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, and I was just looking up more specifically on the issues they work on, and I would, several of them, including affordable housing, economic justice, equity, opposing preemption, letting local communities decide for themselves, exploring, like, what does expansive public safety model look like that, I think, things like our embedded social worker options? And so, I think there are many things, maybe not all, I mean, they have one on immigration, which we just don't necessarily weigh in on as a local community too often, but it seems like a lot of them would be in line with the things in our strategic plan already, and certainly would feel comfortable if there were city funding, put toward it, to take it as my charge to see how can, what ideas are there to advance the things we've already identified as goals? But again, the last thing I'll say to councilmember Troutman's point, if we were to decide that only one a year is appropriate, you should definitely, it sounds like you already have plans and are certain you could go, and I am not even sure yet if it's realistic. So, would say, I am comfortable as So, would say, I'm comfortable, as Sean had said, with a policy that's more once-per-term and taking into account the several years that we have not used this money. But if it is just one, I would encourage you to go ahead.
So, it sounds like once-per-term, people are comfortable with that. And I think another, you've suggested another criteria is that it should fit with our strategic plan. Are there other thoughts for things we should use when we're making decisions like this?
I was just going to say, with, in terms of, like, how the policy orientation, I think it could be, I think we should accord ourselves, you know, a professional discretion to say, these are the issues that I'm passionate about and/or that I want to learn more. Maybe you're not passionate, but you're like, this is a need that the city has. I really want to learn about this. I think I would only feel uncomfortable if it was, like, particularly party-affiliated or sponsored, and that would feel like, yeah, I'm less concerned. You know, Sean may want to attend the National Parking Lot Association. And, you know, irrespective of where he came down on the issue, if it was issue-oriented, it seems appropriate where if it were organized, politics-oriented, that would just seem like not what we should ask the city to support. So, that's kind of where I came down.
All right, and Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Just by one suggestion, was I thought the process that the City Manager came up with for these policy requests was good of just asking us to say what it is and how it relates to our goals as a city, and perhaps a similar timeline of an annual meeting where we pitch what we want to do for these conferences for the year would make sense. I don't think it's viable to do that for tomorrow, but maybe for next year, that would be a good approach, and would also let us know early in the year if there is going to be unallocated funding.
And I guess, we're talking about national things, but I am going to go to the training for the League of Minnesota Cities in February, and I don't know if other councilmembers are going to that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, two of us that are attending.
And Mayor, I had accounted for that. That, for that local, we've got 2,000 for local conferences and trainings, and of that, there's just a little over 1,000 left. So, I had accounted for that when I interviewed. And there very well could be savings in other areas that they budget.
All right, does that answer your questions that you had on that subject? Did you have anything else you wanted to report on?
Just a quick question related to this. Do you want me to develop a form of some kind? Or would you rather continue to do it best verbally?
I would like a form, just so at least we can just demonstrate that we've thought through if there's ever skepticism that this was an appropriate use of our conference budget.
I would not like a form.
Any tiebreakers out there?
I guess, I'm fine with a form, but I would not expect staff to spend a lot of time on it. I agree that having a formal process, but something similar to the proposed policy ones, that's literally like three questions on a Word document, I think would be plenty.
I would agree with that, because it was helpful to hear when you listed off what the issues were, that they aligned with our strategic plan, because that answered a lot of my questions.
And I don't have any other topics. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Then, we will move on to claims and payroll.
I'll move claims and payroll.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve claims and payroll. Are there any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have approved the claims and payroll. We'll move on to hats off to Hometown Hits, and I think we haven't had Councilmember Hayford O'Leary start lately, so you get to go.
I do not have any item for tonight, unfortunately.
Okay, that's fine. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say hats off, and thank you to the directors at the city who took time to connect with a visiting mayor from the city of Galcaio in Somalia. And for those that were able to attend, and especially, thanks to senior analyst Chris Swanson, who facilitated that. Just an incredible conversation to dialogue with people who are doing similar work on the other side of the world. And the second hats off is to, we toured the water plant, and we have some of the greatest water in the country, in the world, clean, safe. And touring that facility is just an incredible reminder of the great work, ingenious engineering, and natural resources that we have. So, thank you to our, and I was going to comment in the consent calendar that we're improving those facilities, but it's worth remembering and not taking for granted.
Thank you. Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to lift up a lot of exciting movement at our state Capitol, and particularly, I know just, was it two months ago? Recently, had recognized Amelia and the organization and as a bill, I know they've been central to one of our legislative priorities that's been moving around driver's licenses for all. I know that I was excited personally to see, I know we didn't take an official stance as a city, but on the 100% clean energy bill, it certainly has similar values to our own climate action plan. And then, also have seen some great progress and conversations around housing, and certainly appreciate our state representative, Michael Howard's leadership on that front. And so, just will say, personally, it's exciting to see the state legislature moving again. And I think we may see some movement soon on some of our top legislative priorities, including bonding for the Woodlake Nature Center. And so, just want to thank everyone, Richfield residents, Richfield staff, Richfield leaders who have been part of that process to help move things forward that benefit the community.
Thank you. And I would like to add my thanks to the legislators and the staff and the community and everyone who's worked to move forward the bonding bill for the Woodlake Nature Center, and I'm hoping that that continues to move through the process. It's been very encouraging to see everybody coming together to work on that. I also wanted to echo what Councilmember Troutman said. It was an honor to welcome the mayor of Galcaio, Somalia, to the city, and we learned a great deal. And we also learned the value of working together as communities and talking to each other